I know. I deserve it. Okay, Jody's turned on the recording. I want to welcome everyone to the Thursday, April 11th, 2024 noon meeting of the village staff and board of trustees. I wanted to announce that after, at the end of this meeting, we will be holding an executive session to discuss an ongoing negotiation with another municipality. So that will be after we finish all of our normal discussions. So just to let you know that there would be an executive session. I don't believe at the end of that session, we will come out and make another decision. It's just for discussion purposes only. Okay. I am going to start with John.
It's been a busy month. The, uh, with getting the contracts around for the new water line and sidewalk infrastructure utility, the utility project. We're working on final documents now and then we'll get an anticipated start date. I've been contacted by a few people on, in that area. And when we start to get a definitive date, we'll put our message boards up at the beginning and end of the project. So anybody driving in and out of that area will be able to see that the project's going to start. I don't have a nailed down date yet, so I can't, I can't put them up.
You don't have an anticipated date?
No, not yet.
May, June, July?
Uh, it's probably going to be, uh, it's probably going to be, I would say probably the middle of May. Yep, that's, that's what I speculate. Just to recap that project a little bit, the bidder, RB Robinson, has done work in the village, the village in the past. So, um, we're still wrapping that project up and there'll be a payment before the end of the year on the retainage of that water line infrastructure. We had, that was for Warren and Brown Road. We had, um, just, just waiting on the ads, Bill, it's as constructed drawings from the contractor, as that's the contractor's responsibility. The vacuum construction has, uh, on, uh, Uga Heights Road and there will be frequent closures on there. If we could, um, maybe put a little something on the website that we're resuming, um, the, the project.
Yeah.
Uh, it's just basically services to, services to the houses, um, off the main and they'll have to go through and retest the, the main where they connected those services back up. They had a little bit of I and I issues that, um, uh, they were combating, uh, somewhere in the December, January mark. They seem to resolve most of those issues. There's still a few more that they, they just needed fair weather to, to get onto. But basically it's going to be, the trees were planted last fall. So basically it's going to be lawn restoration, uh, reestablish the, the drainages, uh, drainage ways down there and then we'll let that settle and that'll, that'll allow us to start our reconstruction of the roadway. But, uh,
When is that anticipated to begin?
With the roadway? We're probably looking, um, probably June, to be honest with you. One, it's in our new budget, it's in our next year's budget. Was easier than trying to encumber the money because we don't know when officially they're going to be done. They had, like I said, they had a couple.
That's not totally true because it's part of the sewer. Remember that we were supposed to be,
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Order?
Yeah.
That is part of this budget, so it will need to be encumbered. So it, it can start in May.
Yeah, I couldn't remember without looking at my budget. I thought I had it. So, I mean, we're, we're probably going to encumber it. We're probably going to have to encumber it. So I'll give you some estimates on that just because I don't feel comfortable with paving it so soon after they, they've had to dig.
Do we have that change order yet?
Uh, no.
Okay, we need that.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, basically, uh, the whole project from Water Wagon Road down to Cedar Lane was pretty much all on rock. And when they carved down in rock, we had a lot of groundwater come into that area and drop down into the rock and it follows the whole thing down through. And we need to install some water stops. One is by Twin Glens by Don Hertel's place. The water is migrating down the Twin Glens, um, side of things and it's coming out at the pump station. So we need to sever that back up at the intersection of Q Heights and Twin Glens. There's one at, um, there was an issue at, um, Autumn Ridge and there's an issue at, uh, Beddick, Beck, uh, Burtic Hill. We're going to have to excavate the roads and it's, since the sewer line is nine feet deep, it's going to, I want it to go through a little bit of time settling versus, and let the traffic pound on it because the mechanical compacting machines they use with the fractured rock on the side, it doesn't do a good enough job and believe it or not, vehicles do more compacting of, of the trench than anything. So.
When you say a water stop, exactly what are the mechanics of a water stop?
Basically what a water stop is, since the line has been backfilled with stone all the way down through the, the stormwater or the groundwater can migrate down that stone. And what we do is they excavate around the pipe and take, remove all the stones and they add pure clay or betonite. It's a clay substance and they basically, they backfill that all the way up almost to the surface. And what that does is the water can't permeate that. So it comes up and then there will be a uphill from that water stop will be a, a drainage pipe that'll access daylight into a ditch. So the water coming down that will come up a little bit and into the drainage way and that.
Okay, I was about to ask what happens to the water if you can't just stop water?
Yeah, no, and it, so basically, yeah.
It diverts it off.
So basically it'll just be, uh, vented to daylight in a, in a, in another drainage way so it can get out of the system.
And you expect to have several of those then?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that something we're doing or is that something that's?
They're, they're doing and, and that's why I left that 100K in there for change orders. I knew it was going to be, and I'm not sure what.
Change order? This will be a change order?
Yes. Um, we, under our borings, we couldn't get out to the, where the exact sewer line path was. We, because there's like a high, high voltage lines above it. So when we did the, the borings to find where the rock was, we had to stay out from that and we didn't know the borings were done kind of almost in the, the roadbed corridor where there was, the rock is different from where it is actually in the path of the, so, so that's why we had to pay a little bit more for the rock. So, um, that's basically it. We've been hammering away on little projects, a little bit of, um, snow removal here and there and that's it really. Had a meeting with, um, Village Qga Heights, Town of Lansing, um, in the Village of Lansing yesterday about the Youngs' expansion project to the north end of Water Wagon up through. And, uh, I don't think it's locked. It was a very positive, positive, um, meeting. It was about, uh, adding a flow meter at the town village line, um, to monitor the flow. The developers in the Town of Lansing's concern was that there is going to be a minimal amount of connections made to the, to the, to the new line that they're installing, that it wouldn't be readable through the flow meter at such low volumes. Our Brett and I both agree that, uh, that installing the flow meter is more for informational purposes, not to monitor the flow from the use of the dwellings, more, more or less the information if there was a, a break in the line or a frame got knocked off a manhole and the water was pouring in from a drainage way.
All right.
And there's more of an I and I kind of monitoring. And, um, so they were kind of reluctant to try to, try to get one, um, installed and Brett and I expressed our concern that they need to.
It was a requirement.
It's a requirement.
Yeah, there's, there's no argument. They have to do it.
Yep. So.
We have to, but we have to know exactly what the usage is, but we also need to know if there's a problem with the system.
The low volume usage from the, the sanitary is, uh, it's probably almost going to be unreadable.
Right.
So it's, it's really going to be a, a misinformation, but at least we'll have it to monitor.
Yeah, it's an early alert system. Yeah, that's for sure. No, no.
And that's basically about it in a nutshell. Uh, any questions, concerns?
Can you remind me of, um, the Rosina Drive? We talked, the, the street there is partially owned by the town and partially owned by the village?
The, the Rosina Drive?
Yeah, is it, because we were talking about sidewalks on that once before and, um, that's, you explained that it was.
Basically, it's the, basically the Town of Lansing's. So.
The whole, the whole road, both sides of the street or?
The, the south side of the street, the houses are in the village.
Houses are in the village.
Yeah, not the street.
Okay.
Not the easements or the road.
Gotcha.
So basically, and how that.
I just knew it was something town, but I didn't understand it exactly.
And how Ruth, Ruth Gulf, or is that her name? Ruth Gulf?
Yeah.
Sent an email a long time ago. The village is different because we, we're basically a sewer, water, street lighting district. And she said they were going to have to set up a district for that as to.
They're a part of the Cherry Road Sewer District. So Rosina, I think in their only one house is actually in the village.
I think, I think.
The rest are in the town. Okay. But they have, they get sewer from us. So we build them, that's part of the Warren Road Cherry Road Sewer District.
Right.
Okay, thank you. 14 bags of corn.
What's that?
I thought you said the, 14 bags of corn.
We have a still out there. That, that new storage shed is really cool still.
You're making bash with it?
I have a question, John. This is, is related to the, uh, the grant that I'm applying for.
Okay.
That replacing of that bridge over in Lansing Trails. It's a wooden bridge now, but what we will have at the end is something that's very similar to the Hartel Park, which is a walkway over a culvert.
Culvert, yeah.
Of what sounds, okay. I just wanted to confirm.
Ronnie, I.
Take a picture of it so when we send it in, we'll say, this is what it will look like. So.
I truly apologize. This week has been crazy, um, almost a blur. So, uh, you know, with the projects dealing, dealing with, you know, the, the sewer project and everything, I, that, my spreadsheet was like vague, but, but it's what my budget numbers were though. So I just transferred that in.
That's what we will submit. I'm giving them as much information as I can and it won't cover, certainly if we get the entire $5,000, it won't cover the cost, but it will help.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, um, I, I did happen to watch the meeting and it was, I, I see where you guys were going with that. Things, um, fought to submit the $5,000 bid for that project is pretty good. If you did need another project to it and that didn't seem worthy, I would, I would find one because there's always improvements in the village.
That's a definite thing rather than that trail. It's a specific thing that we're working on that trail to improve the access and it helps, I'm saying that it helps with the, the maintenance of that.
Sure.
We can keep it plowed and we can keep it clean. And, um, it just looked like a good project.
I was slightly confused though. I think Peter actually brought up some of the details of the grant that night of the meeting, um, whether it was for a new installation on a trail or maintenance on an existing trail. I, I still was.
It doesn't have to, it could be either.
It could be either.
Okay, all right, perfect. Yeah, so this is a good.
It doesn't mean that we will necessarily get it. We're right at the edge. We have to wait five years and we're right at the edge for five years. So I'm going to go ahead and, and submit it. If we get it, we get it. If we don't.
Five years from what?
Oh, you can, you can only apply for the specific grant once every five years. And it was 2019, so I think, I think we're okay.
I can see that, it's gotta be five years.
Yeah, it's, it's in, it's in the.
In print?
It's in the grant application. And I didn't know that either until I started the application. There's a little right up at the top. If you applied within.
The last time we got the grant, it was in.
2019, yes.
So to, you and I had just a little bit of an email exchange there, or I replied your email about the cost calculation summary that I think Jack.
No, that was great. Thanks so much. We just find something online about Indiana and then presents it as reality here and I have no way of countering it.
Yeah.
Your email reply was perfect. I was going to thank you for that. It was, it was perfect.
Just kind of to reach out on that a little bit more. So when we're thinking about doing trails and we're doing right of acquisitions versus easements, um, that was very noted in there about the federal grants requiring right of acquisitions, much like we did Trip Hammer Road. So you have to have them release their, transfer their rights of the property to the village where an easement is basically just granting use of their property and they're still ownership and they're paying taxes on. So whenever you apply for a federal grant, you want to work hard to get the right of acquisitions versus easements. That was our biggest, Jody, probably of anybody has the most knowledge about what went on with Trip Hammer. When, it was basically a narrow road down through here with just a little expansion around the malls for turn lanes and stuff. And they, the village went through extensive legal process to either purchase right of acquisitions or, or people just submitted them.
Yeah, so what happened was is we tried to get everyone to sign off to give us that property. Well, if one person will not give it to you, then you have to pay value for everything. So that added like two years to the project.
Yeah.
When we did it last time because it was.
2000.
Homeic at the hotel there that would not give it to us.
And that's.
Everyone else had signed off and so we ended up having to pay everybody instead.
And that's the one I've noted in the, in the email to you. Basically it, it got really painful. We, that little piece of land that was, we have talked about where Key Bank and HSBC was, I think that was valued at 40 some thousand just for that 2,000 square foot piece of land. So just think about what the, the land is valued now with all the, after COVID, everything's gone up. So when you have to purchase a piece of land, unfortunately, because they're using that as 10% of the cost of a project is right of acquisitions in that formula. And it's going to be, I, I would sooner, all your multipliers that go into that, like stream crossings and stuff like that, they're probably not going to go up. I mean, because those numbers are relatively the same and you can't really use the, that multiplier on the 10% right of acquisitions because they're going to probably be 20 or 30% of the cost of the project. So your multipliers will probably come down. It, it's, it's really, it was a neat document, um, but it's, it's for planning purposes, you know, and it was, it was really cool and, and, and I'm right there with you. Let's, let's get as much land as we can and trails are, we like them. I mean, they're not, they're neat to see people walk and push their strollers and walk their dogs and give a little bit of extra, uh, you know, a village-like, city-like setting in a very rural village. So, um, it's, it's cool. So, uh, anything I can do to help you along, I will. And, and, and I did, uh, took a minute and Donnie and I just briefly looked at, I sent the email out, he was in a meeting. I said, hey, can you look at that for a second just to confirm my thoughts about not having enough information to see if their numbers are realistic or not? And they just provide it as a budget planning process. So that's all I have is, uh, any other questions?
How's the storage shed coming?
Good.
Supposed to finish?
No.
Okay.
Been raining a little bit. We're, we got some drainage in to keep the water away from it.
Okay.
And, uh, we're going to form it and probably pour concrete next week in there.
Okay, all right.
Come in.
It's just proceeding?
Yeah.
You've got other things to do too, right?
Yeah, we're cautiously taking plow equipment off trucks.
Okay.
And.
Yeah.
Getting mowers ready.
Uh, and that, my last question is traffic cameras.
They're up, they're just waiting to order. Everything's, uh, they're not up. They're, they're, everything's been ordered, but the lead time on, on something like that is some time. So.
Yeah.
Since you need the static IP address, they need, they need to like the IME number.
Yes.
Before we can order the SIM card and they can't process an IME number until the camera.
The equipment.
In your hand, you know what I mean?
You can read it off.
Uh, um.
Ordered them?
Yeah.
Ordered them?
No, they're all, they're all, yeah, yeah. So I kind of want to like, uh, chat just a couple of seconds on the email that Jeff Diver put out about, um, intersection pedestrian crossings.
Right.
Has everybody, was everybody involved in that? I, I believe, I thought he copied everybody.
Thought he did.
On that, yeah. But anyway, uh, Jeff was concerned that in the project, uh, there wasn't a north side road crossing on Trip Hammer at the Graham Road intersection to Graham Road West Side where the top sign is. Um, we looked at that in 2005 under the 2000, under the Trip Hammer Reconstruction Project. It wasn't warranted and, um, but we were able in 2017 or 13, I, I quoted the date because I actually looked it up. We put a west side crossing from the Doocy Dental to the north side on the west side of the intersection of Trip Hammer. So we do have pedestrian movement to three of the four sides of the intersection. It just didn't warrant, without major reconstruction of the intersection, it, there's just really no possible way to get the pedestrian crossing on the north side of Graham Road and Graham Road West on Trip Hammer. And without affecting the permissive right of ways, like the, the right turn on red, it's permissive to do that. And then the right turn on red is you're coming down or Trip Hammer into the Graham Road West, who like the BJ's, those are, that's, that whole intersection is a village-owned intersection with permissive right turn on red with three, um, south main line, east and west side roads have permissive left turn, turn arrows, green arrows on the signal. It just is impossible. It's not impossible, it's definitely doable, but at what expense do you want to go to, to put the north, north, um, pedestrian crossing in on Trip Hammer? He kept insinuating in his email and I was pretty sure that everybody was copied. If not, I'll forward it to you, uh, the email thread. But he kept, I feel really bad because he kept like throwing the trustees like, if the trustees were walking south and blah, blah, blah. I, I just felt like I was putting you guys on the spot. So I apologize if, if that email, um, was in any way.
It's not the only intersection like that. Deborah and I walk a lot right now.
Yeah.
And if an intersection has no crosswalk, we find this side of the intersection that has a crosswalk and use it. If there's heavy traffic, it's light traffic, we take our life in our own hands and cross across. Uh, it, it's not the only intersection like that. The thing we should, I think the thing we should do is monitor that. If the foot traffic across that intersection becomes, increases a lot with all of this work, we might down the road consider doing something about the north side. But right now it's just not worth it. There's not that much traffic that can't use the three sides to get where they need to go.
Okay, I'll, I'll send you guys, I'll send you all the email and, and tell him I'm walking there a lot. I walk, I walk down to the shops just to shop here. Okay, he, he. I have crossed that one. It, it's a, it's a annoyance, let's say, but you can manage it. Yeah, okay, yeah. Cause he's like, you would have to just take one more step to get it to safely done. So in his email, original email, he, he only said there was a walk, crosswalk, pedestrian crosswalk on the east side and the south side, when that's not true in 2017, we put one on the west side. So you can migrate through the whole intersection, but you have to take, take an extra step to make yourself safe. If you want to jaywalk in his email, you can illegally. But the whole point is it's a walkable community. If you have to take an extra 70 foot to do it, it's doable. You know what I mean?
The real problem is to have no sidewalk.
Yeah, so we're.
That, that's the real problem.
I agree and we're doing that and we're making great improvements on the north side of Graham Road West under this project. It's going to get a nice walk. It's going to get a nice walk for the people to get to the YMCA. It's a great thing and it's going to have some street lights there. So it's.
Once we do that, the pedestrian crossings from the north side might increase enough where we can consider making changes.
Yeah.
Not right now.
The largest part is the distance that goes across there, goes at an angle back across the four, the reversible turn lane, left turn lane, the two drive-through lanes and then the right turn lane in there. So now you've got to go through four lanes of traffic. And when you go through four lanes of traffic, your, your pedestrian crosswalk lengthens and how the pedestrian crossings are timed is by the footage of the crosswalk. That's going to be the, a very long crosswalk. If you ever went down to the farmer's market in Ithaca, that light stays red in all directions because that's a long walk across there for pedestrians. So they time that on, on a person pushing a buggy or something.
Yes.
So it could add a lot of lag congestion in the flow on Trip Hammer is all I was saying. That's all I have, heard of, that stuff.
So you'll send whatever it is I didn't get?
I didn't get it.
Send, send the email string to everybody, John. I, I thought that the trustees were copied.
Yeah, I'll look again, but I, oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Cause then that helps explain.
Excuse me?
That helps us explain.
Okay, yeah, that's why I thought, I just wanted to touch me, because I think you were involved and, and I just hope I handled it. I tried to give any other, the logistics to it and he was awful concerned about, that's why I thought he sent it to everybody is the Qga Blue and the Trip Hotel. He was talking about an extra tax and I let some, let you guys handle that. That's out of my business.
That's not, yeah. You have no control over that.
The mechanics of the pedestrian movement, the traffic movement, I, I had relativity to reply to them.
Okay, anything else, John? Or any questions for John? Chris?
Like I said, we're going to frame, hopefully it stops raining for the concrete, uh, putting some drainage in, getting the mowers ready and plow equipment off slowly because you never know. And greasing stuff up, getting ready to go for this year.
Sinotubes.
Oh, yeah. Got to do sinotubes for the light, streetlights, sun, dark drive.
For the light poles, the bases.
Right.
We're building them here.
Right.
So we got to manufacture those.
Okay.
So that'll start zone two.
All right. Yeah, we were amazed, we were going down to South Carolina. It was nice. We drove into spring. Coming back, we drove into winter and it was snowing and it was slushy and icy. And I was thinking, it's, it's, it was late, if even for here, so, yeah, I know what you mean. So, so how long, if you had to put those plows back on, how long is that process? I'm just curious, how long is that process to put all those?
We, it takes a little longer to put anything back on, but we, off of the 2020, kind of we had it all off and ready to haul dirt in an hour and a half, something like that.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can put half of it back on to get through.
Right.
So we don't have to go like full dress it out, but we can probably do it in 45 minutes or an hour.
Well, what's half, we don't have to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
And you take the plow off, it stays off until next winter. Anyway, okay.
I'm at the point now where I hope that's the case.
It's so hard to power right now. You can do so much damage to lawns. I mean, if you drive off McAdam, you're stuck. So.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
That's it for me.
Thank you both. Mike?
I will use, uh, what little remaining time John's left to tell you what I've been. anticipation to like the building season. I've mainly been working on the fire inspections and trying to get stormwater, trying to get ahead on stormwater. Two events for the stormwater is, uh, I'm starting to work with NAD on updating our section 80 in our village code, which is a discharge and whatnot because the new MS4 has certain regulations that kind of coincide with our, with that chapter. So we got to make sure that they're up to date. It's basically comparing what we have to what they, the new, new stuff that they want to put in there. So it's not an overhaul, but it's kind of tweaking it so it brings us up to date. The other event, uh, our Stormwater Coalition, uh, we meet every quarter and this quarter,
The other event, our stormwater coalition, we meet every quarter, and this quarter, I have volunteered the village. What we're doing is we're having a coalition meeting here, and the special guest speaker is John Dunkle, who is, he's like the Tom Brady of stormwater.
Tom Brady.
So what we'll do is we'll have a meeting here, and like I said, normally we have to, those are the ones that you have approved me to, it costs like a hundred, village $150, they get a four-hour session with this guy. But he's going to come here, and then we're going to do a site visit to one of the village stormwater ponds out at Norway, it's basically Lansing Trails 2, that's, that pond that we had to clean out. And basically what he's going to do is give us advice on how to approach cleaning, cleaning out the stormwater ponds that we're going to be responsible for. So I thought it would be excellent, it gives us a little bit, these guys already know how to do it, but hey, if he's got something new, it'd be nice for us to learn it firsthand and not have to pay for it.
Will there be paparazzi?
Uh, probably not.
Paparazzi?
I guess we could be paparazzi.
So is this a, we're invited?
He's not that charismatic.
Can we tag along?
Sure, you guys, whatever, you guys can come do whatever you want. I'll let you know, it's May 9th, I'll send it out, but probably have, um, a lot of municipalities, there's, there's stormwater with their supervisor or whatever there, possibly one person from DPW, you might be looking at 20, 30 people. We're definitely going to go, because I think it's, it's very educational, and I thank Mike for setting it up. I mean, it's one of the ponds that we have to clean, there's Beckett Way Pond, there's some other ponds that we're going to be cleaning, cleaning this year, and we want to, if there's ticks, tips and tricks to do it correctly, and we want that, for sure.
You mean Beckett Way Pond this year? When is that going to be? Just some random time over summer?
But is there concerns?
I just didn't know that, that was a thing.
It's in, it's in our budget. We're doing it because of the one complaint, I think the village board had from Cedar Lane.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's not the only reason why we're doing, we're doing it because it needs it, simply. And if we can mitigate any future flooding downstream for that, perfect.
When you do the pond, do you also go around the rim of the, of the streets and clear the, I know, this way up, is it called, what is it called?
The ditches? Uh, not typically when we're doing the stormwater ponds, we're just focusing on the stormwater ponds.
Because I know that one house right on the corner, the first house on the right, when you come into Shannon Park, they had like stopped up ditches and flooding, that was like three years ago or so, but.
We did some ditching there. There was a person that, um, just before the park on the left side, going straight through, just after the park on the left side, there's a house there, a yellow house, I believe. Uh, they, we had a, they did a, a phone line down through there, and we have to dig that out, so I don't want to steal Mike's thunder, he'll yell at me again, but.
Thanks, I was yelling at people.
Talking about Shannon Park? Yeah. Well, we don't know, we've got to find the information, we don't know what the original depth of that was or anything, so we got to, we'll try to find that out or at least get advice from Houdie or something. Yeah, because I mean, a lot of these ponds, like the original Platts, don't give, Platts don't give any information on the grading plan of the ponds, so when we go in there, we're, we're willy-nilly in it, so.
I'll let you walk out there and measure that one, Mike.
It's, it's definitely wet, and there's not going to be any cactils on the edge, at least for a while, so.
That might be a good, excuse me, there might, might be a good question for this guy that's coming out, is what do you do in a situation when it's an old pond and you're not sure? What, what's, how do you normally handle something like that? Is there?
It's definitely, uh, definitely a huge concern for us is, and not to interrupt you, but each pond had a different design over the years. EC changed their method of thinking, one pond was a dry pond, the next pond, like that pond that went up to sea, was totally wet, that holds like four feet of water.
Right.
And then next year after that, we seeded like that design, so they changed it back to dry ponds with four bays, and it just had, you don't know which one they used on that, unless you have plans, which we're even having a hard time finding Lansing Trails 1 plans of the grading plan of the pond. Yeah, luckily we have the information on this pond that they're going to be cleaning out, so that's why we kind of picked it, I mean, we.
Maybe you should pick a harder one.
Shannon Park.
Right, that's why you have the, you have Tom Brady there to tell you what, eyeball to death, and be like, yeah, that's a 15 footer right there.
Yeah, Tom, Tom, I was going to say, oh, you probably need an engineer to take a look. Yeah, but Tom Brady doesn't, he's going to have another trip down that pond.
Forget it.
I mean, I could have got that from Phil Simms.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Was never wet, it was just a big swale in the beginning. It was. It's flooding all the time now, so I don't know.
Not in defense of what goes on, but I explained to Mike that over the years, when they did the original development, there, there's not a lot of foliage that was in the creeks because they were all dug out. We have since.
Thanks.
No, you're all right, that's all right. We have since have a, like the honeysuckle that's, that's grown up into the, the streams, right, which is stabilization is a good thing, but it's also retards the water from venting correctly.
Right.
So we've actually slowed, what happened is the growth has slowed the water down to Beckett, Beckett and Wedgewood area, but it's helped a little bit of Cedar and Hemlock. And they used to be chronic flooding down on East Shore Drive from the village. I, I can, we've battled that for years, and we just kept telling people, there's nothing we can do. We only convey water from one side of the street to the other, we don't own the water once we touch it all the way down. That's the big difference.
And then the amount of water coming down now can be extreme, a lot more than what was designed for, too.
Exactly, so between Mike, Mike, um, getting them all doing what they're doing and us doing Beckett Way, maybe we can mitigate flooding all the way down to the lake, or at least control it a little bit more. See if it's going to make a change.
And does, will the ditching help that, if you do that also, or not?
Ditching's only going to help the, if there was an issue with water getting out of the ditch onto somebody's property, that's basically what that did. But a ditch is designed just to help the road, and to keep the water from kind of going into the people's property. It's channeling it along the road, because the road severed the water from going back and forth, so when you create a road through there, you create an obstacle for the water. So the ditches just keep the water from the road, and then people use their ditches to vent their basements and their drainage for their lawns. So basically, a ditch, if there's a stopped up ditch, ditch, it usually either comes back out into the road or drops down into somebody's land. So if we need to ditch something, we will, absolutely.
Well, there is standing, there's been standing water this whole spring on both sides of the road on Wedgewood.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Is going to be related or not, but yeah, it's definitely like.
It's really not going to help things, anything.
Some want like the person on, like, the, like on my backyard neighbor, the Halburns, I'm going to, some want their house to flood, because I know that.
Unfortunately, there's nothing we can do in back of the houses. I mean, our hands are tied because unlike Towne and Lansing, they have a drainage district and they're, they're taking a bunch of land to, to do drainage, the village doesn't want to get into that. It's, it's a never-ending battle, you could battle drainage forever. So we definitely, uh, we definitely want to help the situation. I think the mall is going to help most of anything. They have so much impermeable surface at the mall. Look at the amount of blacktop that's on, at the mall. And that was piecemealed before the stormwater prevention plans. We had first, just now got our stormwater maintenance agreement with them since the subdivision, because that was such long ago, 70s, I believe?
73.
That, that they added little sections, and they didn't create stormwater enough to handle the rough drains and the parking lot drains.
So Mike, I, with the, with regard, I saw the notes from the planning board meeting with regard to changing that self, dicks into self-storage and modifying the amount of parking spots. I mean, I think it's already on their mind with the planning board to make some of those modified parking spots into permeable surface trees.
It is on their mind.
Yeah, and that will be great if we do that.
My question to the, to the proposed storage area was whether they're going to buy that subdivided section or whether it was still going to be owned by the mall and then just leased out, because then you become, who's responsible for all of this?
That was my question.
If they subdivide it off, then I can't see any reason why we can't reduce the parking, uh, because it'll be just specifically for storage facilities, they don't need 1,000 spaces up there. But then you have to read through their whole, uh, what was it?
ECU or whatever.
ECCR.
Oh, that's, and also, we'll have, we'll look into it. Definitely turning, um, parking spots into permeable surface is great. Um, the, what do they call that, permeable pavement is not so good. It gets plugged up with sand from our town roads and stuff, and without one good spot to look at is gastronomy over here. That whole parking lot is permeable pavement, it's very coarse, it's really tough to walk across. And that whole, since they didn't have enough area to have stormwater retention areas, they use the underground drainage pipes to perk down through the pavement and then go into the underground storage. If they don't vacuum them up several times a year, the pavement becomes.
Impermeable.
Yeah, becomes impermeable.
You know, we know.
Yeah.
Well, let's see how, if we can go with the reducing the parking spots, that'd be great.
Yeah, that stormwater ponds, the village is responsible for, as soon as we can either have them engineered or find the, uh, original, you know, what it was originally supposed to look like, we're pretty much done, because we're not going to, we're not going to accept any more responsibility for ponds. I mean, the village doesn't want it. For example, you had, um, beers, beers up here, we don't want those ponds, we didn't, we didn't take those ponds, it's going to be their responsibility, it's going to have a stormwater agreement that I'm going to have to make sure that they maintain. So we don't want to be doing that. How we ended up with that Lansing Trails pond that we're going to is beyond me, it was.
Which one is?
It's the one nearby, it's Little Spur, it's called Evar's Way.
Parkway or whatever.
Parkway.
Two down there.
Yeah, okay.
At the stop sign, basically.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, these two.
Because.
So that's.
Anything else, Mike?
It's kind of all I got.
Uh, just real quick, uh, how is Beer's development ongoing? Is it still?
The beers?
Yeah, are they just?
To be honest with you, any of these large projects, I haven't heard a word from anybody.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I hadn't heard anything from you, so I suspect.
Max, from Uptown Grove, from the beers, I haven't heard anything from you.
Okay, all right. Might, you might see some movement on those once the weather gets better, right? Okay, all right, thanks. Any questions for Mike then? Hey, Jody?
Um, just a formality, we need to set the village elections for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024, from 12 to 9 in the village, uh, Lansing Community Room. Make a motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion about the elections, date or time, which we really can't change? All those in favor of passing that resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Is this your last meeting, Drew?
I think it's Monday.
Oh, well, if I don't see you.
Yeah, oh, you're not going to be, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's great to, get to know you. Nice, you drive by on the plow.
I do, yeah.
Yeah. You can always watch, mine, too. Wow, that's great. I appreciate you guys, the mailbox is intact, so I appreciate it.
That's my route. If it was his, that would have been gone a long time ago. Probably multiple times.
Extra points, yeah.
Hey, would you like to approve the minutes from April 1st?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 1st. Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion about the April 1st meeting minutes? All those of, all those in favor of approving the minute, the draft minutes, making the final, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
I'm standing.
And vouchers?
Vouchers, yes.
Can I have that red one right there?
Good job. Do you want us to wait a bit?
No, no.
Okay, good.
I pretty much handed them all in, so I could.
Has everyone had a chance to look at the vouchers? Any questions? Okay. Hearing none, I will move, we approve the 11 vouchers, second?
I'll second.
Carolyn seconds, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Okay, which is approved. All right, anything else, Jody?
Um, that's it, just pretty much, I've been working a lot from home with everything that's going on with Doug's health, um, it's not getting much better, but we're able to keep things going along with Mike's help in here. Um, yeah, going along, water payments are coming in right now, which is a little crazy, but, so.
Okay.
And does anybody have anything for the agenda for Monday that they want to add? Are we going to add, I just, after executive session, you'll send me something, is that? Let me tell you what I have on the agenda so far?
If something comes up, yeah.
I can tell you.
Yeah.
Let me just go there.
It's our joint meeting, so it's going to be very, yeah, a little heavy, so we kind of don't even need anything else.
So we have, um, public hearing for the budget, and then we are going to be discussing the tree law issues and changes, and then the proposal or law, that's what I have. So if you have anything else that you want on there.
Do they have a solid proposal for the tree law changes? I thought they were still discussing it, in which case I think we should postpone that discussion.
For the solar law?
No, for the tree law.
The tree.
I thought they were still negotiating on.
Still discussing, we got halfway through at this last meeting.
Yeah, so maybe we should talk about that.
We can still discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah.
See where, what direction.
See where they are, if they have any questions already, you think? Okay, good.
Yeah.
So just to keep it moving along.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're here, so we might as well put it on the agenda to talk about it.
Okay.
Um, is there anything else? Maybe we can go?
One second, let me see here.
You should have close to a full planning board.
I think everybody, Mike did get ahold of me and say he was coming, so I think we have everyone.
I don't have anything.
Okay, I'll keep it just like that. So I have in here about the grant application. Grant application to the Tompkins County Planning Department for $5,000 to be used for the bridge replacement in Lansing Trails.
Right.
The county requires budget details for that piece of the project, which Courtney is giving you. Um, as part of the grant application, a resolution in support of submitting the grant application is required.
Yes.
So do we want a resolution to authorize the mayor to submit a grant application to Tompkins County Planning for $5,000 to be used for the bridge replacement in Lansing Trails?
Yeah, we need that.
Okay.
Someone move?
Okay.
Wolfgang moved.
Second.
Drew second.
Got to be quick. Everyone got involved today.
Yeah, this is, it can be as simple as a letter from me saying that, that the village, this is what the village would like to do, rather do the resolution. It's just a box to check off that we can't submit anymore. I have to have a document that I can upload or it doesn't let me submit it. I, I can't even make preview, print out a preview of it to share with you, but once I get all the pieces together and I've submitted it, I'll make a, I'll make a copy and send it to all of you. And if we want to make changes, we can do that April 29th. So anyway, it's, uh, it, it just seemed like that was a good project, because it's something definite that we are, we need to do, we want to do, and it will make it look better, and it will be safer, and so there's no better, I didn't think it was a better project to submit to. So any, any questions or discussion about that? Yeah, okay, all those in favor of passing the resolution, allowing me to submit a resolution to Tompkins County for this particular grant application, say aye?
Aye.
I'll send you that official resolution, I'll make it on my.
Jody's official form.
So you can send just a word documented.
Yes, so that would be perfect, Jody, thank you. Okay, so we'll go around the room now. Carol?
I'd like us to reconsider, and I know I've raised this once before, and you're going to have a good answer to why you're going to say no, John. I would like to reconsider our brush pickup for spring and fall and expand them. I, both times I've found them to be less than I want to, to as a homeowner. Like, for example, right now, I'd love to have leaf bags or leaf, or loose materials also picked up, and then when you, I think you only do, the way that you do leaves in the fall, I can't remember, but I remember also wishing I could do more at that time as well. So I know I've raised this before, and maybe we have to budget for something more for next year, but, um, yeah, so it just sticks, and I just wish that, there's just so much debris. I mean, with the windstorms we've had, like, this whole town is on the ground, and I just wish that we could do more to clean up the village.
We don't do leaves at all.
Yeah, that's what it is. I wish you, I'd like you to do leaves.
Just because it's.
And brush.
It's so much more equipment, so much labor intensive. They, Cuba Heights spends months doing leaves, months. They, Cuga Heights spends months doing leaves, months. They do, they do a surround of leaves, because what happens is, not everybody brings their leaves out at the same time. Just because you tell them a date, doesn't mean they're gonna do it.
Well, that's what you get, I mean.
I understand that.
I'd say, let's just, but, but we don't have it budgeted for this year, because you're saying it's more expensive, but it's something that I would like to consider in the future, to do, do leaves and brush.
The second thing is, we're so rural here, like, people own, like, acre lots, or half acre lots. You should drive over there and look at the shoulders over in Cuga Heights, look at the scouring of, of ditches and shoulders, because people bring leaves out after it's over with, and what do you do then? You know, just because you, they missed the date, they're gonna have to bring the leaves back. So what happens, all the culverts become plugged, right now, the people are responsible, they either take them to their back lot, or they have a contractor come in and take them away. So if, if, say some person missed the, missed the date, and it's on a steep hill, and they bring them out to the road, and we don't take them, because, hey, you missed the date, now you've got a ditch problem, now you've got scouring everywhere, you lose the road, just take a ride and look at their shoulders over there, they're all scoured with water, because they've either plugged the culvert in, driveways are missing, it's, it's terrible, you don't, you don't want to do leaves, I can tell you, maybe another brush pickup, it's fine. Stay away from leaves, I'm telling you right now.
I know, you were gonna tell me that, because that's what you can take it to. I do take it to the. Okay.
I'm not trying to get out.
Wishing that there was an additional service provided both times, because, like I said, this year in particular, there's so much wind, there's so much debris all over the village.
I, I don't dispute that, and.
Have a fire pit in your backyard, but wait till after the birthday. That's what I do, I take, I'm gonna put it.
That, gotta get an operator for that.
Well, I, I can tell you right now, we, we could possibly look into adding another pickup.
I would like to.
Stay away from leaves.
Look into, what about bags of leaves?
Bags are terrible, because people put them in plastic bags.
But if you don't do the rules, you just doesn't get picked up with my recycling.
And then what are you gonna do, leave it there?
Yeah, yeah, well, we could try, and does it.
We can try giving people a chance. This is an experimental one-year program. If you guys don't behave, we won't be doing it again next year, but let's give it a try for the fall.
Does it require extra equipment? There's a lot of work.
It requires extra manpower, additional, we're talking, they have 13 guys over there, and they do it for two months straight, and then September, October, and into December.
Well, then, one time, one time, if you don't behave, it's just an experimental pickup.
If you do it, if you do it one time, and they don't behave, you've set a precedent, well, you did it last year, I just assumed it was this year. If, we are so rural, I would like to.
John, you know, I appreciate that this three square miles, you've used that term three times, we are rural.
We are rural, and, and we're.
We just want to be clear about this.
We're very rural, and there is lots.
Pat doesn't get any leaf pickup down there.
What'd you say?
Pat, her house, she don't get any leaf pickup.
Pat who?
O'Neil, got all them trees around her house.
So, what are you saying, you don't think she'd be in favor of this policy, or against?
Oh, no, I got crucified for cutting brush down there.
Yeah, Pat rural.
You can do leaves?
And now you have to do them on the state roads, too, because they're village residents, and all the houses that are on this side of, of, of East Shore Drive, and Warren Road, they're village residents, and that means you're doing the leaves there, too. It's, it's five additional guys, I swear, it's five additional guys, you don't want it.
I do want it. I do.
Okay, then, then, then when it comes to budget.
We have to budget for it, it's not something that we're just gonna do. So where is the responsibility of being a homeowner?
I agree. It's like, I always, it always chuckled me, people went and got a Christmas tree, but they can't dispose of it. I'm fine with doing Christmas trees, it's such a simple thing. But when you're talking leaves, being rural, it's, City of Etaque, it's not a big deal, they do it because they have catch basins, they have to do some form of tree brush pickup, or, or leaf pickup. The Village of Cuga Heights is built out, they're, we're talking, and most of those people hire commercial contractors.
Well, that's.
And they take, they take great care of it, you know, a lot of times, a lot of times, they, the commercial contractors blow it to the edge of the road, and we're stuck doing it. I, I, I tell you, you want services, I'm begging you to stay away from that. I'm begging you, it's, it's gonna be bad.
Yes, it will.
I, I guess, I always try to bring it down to the, imagine the village is the size of my yard, and I am the DPW crew doing my yard, I can tell you the one part of the year that I absolutely hate, is leaf pickup.
Yeah, I agree.
It is such a, and I can see.
Wrong with me, every property, I took care of myself.
Oh, well, I did, too, I did.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean I.
Let me just say this here, I, I am in contact with a lot of people in this village, and they are so, so impressed with the village's efficiency for having such a small staff. You end up with too many people, a $60,000 employee ends up to be 100,000, because now you're paying us health insurance, all that stuff. You have to pick your battles, and that is one that I would just stay away from. I'm not the one that's gonna have to go out there and do it, I can drive a truck, these guys can do it, you know, but it's not worth it, I, I will assure you that one. I mean, I'm all about services, I pride myself in continuity and water repairs, sewer plugs, I mean, we were battling one that they hit with a directional drill, and we, even though we didn't, we had to kind of oversee the repair, and it's on East Lee's Way, it was yesterday, the spectrum come through, I give them the curb card of the sewer, and they drove right through it, I'm all about services, I love it, I love servicing people. Well, we pile roads, our roads are the best, right? I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we, we pave roads, our roads are the best, you get into leaves, it's a, it's.
Our roads are the best. Our roads are the best, I totally agree with you. So, what, for the municipalities that provide leaf pickup, is it easier, what's, some of them do bags, and some of them do vacuum, loose, so, what is required, which one is simpler?
Unbagged leaves is mechanically picked up, meaning leaves is a big giant vacuum.
Yeah.
Bagged leaves is compensation, because they're saturated with water, they're frozen, they're heavy, he's gotta physically put them in a, a packer, a garbage truck, so it can be packed. It's no bags, you know what I mean?
So you put, if we did do it, you would prefer vacuum, is my question.
Oh, yeah, because they go around, and a lot of them now, you can even, you can buy a machine that's like mechanically operated. Okay?
No, I'm completely against vacuum, because I know exactly what happens. I have my green wall behind my property, and the wind's blowing from the west, so I know exactly what happens to all these piles of leaves, where they end up, all on my property. So, I'm totally against vacuum.
Wind doesn't blow a bag away.
That doesn't blow the bag, well.
I got it.
And I have enough to do with the, the garbage I get from the recycling, you know, I have to, after every recycling, I have to walk around on my property and pick up the garbage from other people, I don't need the leaves from them, honestly.
Let, let me ask a higher level question. Are there contractors that will, that a municipality can hire to do this for us? I haven't heard of any, I haven't, it would be nice to know if someone did offer that service, what their manpower is, and the cost, because that is pretty much what we would be assuming, if we did that.
If you look at the number one cost in the Village of Cuga Heights, it is three services, garbage pickup, leaf pickup, and police. Those are the three largest expenses in, in the Village of Cuga Heights, and they have been created such long ago that they can't drop them.
Okay, we can move on.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I like, I love.
I'm gonna repeat it again when I have a different board trustees in front of me.
We can go for it, I mean, we're just gonna, get rid of the leaves, let's not plant more trees in the village, let's cut them down.
Conifers.
We can't get into that.
No.
No, but I'm just saying, in your tree, not so, but in your tree planting program, you want 30 more trees per acre, you want.
Then you decide.
Well, that's counterintuitive to.
I'll trace that, so. Some have more than others.
Yeah, anyway, I hope I didn't offend you.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, I just, I'm just telling you the facts, if you want it, we'll do it, I mean, it's as simple as that, you, you're in control.
And you're retiring when?
You guys are driving the bus, really are, we're just passengers, helping you along.
Oh.
But we're a team, we're a team, that's it.
I, I wish it was a good solution, Carol, I'm with you, it would be a great thing, but I, it's, I trust John to give us good feedback about how much it's going to cost us, it would be very.
I'm all about trails, put trails in.
And, and I can remember, I'm thinking back to times I've driven through Cuyahoga Heights, when people had their bags out, their bags were turned over, they'd get hit by a car, it's leaves, like John said, they would be all over the place, and there would be piles of leaves in between bags, some people follow the rules, some people don't, but the, the, it just, it was, it was chaotic, I could see if you started doing that, it would be the same.
Okay, let me ask you this, what is the definition of brush, in terms of like, are tall grass cuttings brush?
If you stuffed it on top of that, on top of that brush pile, that was, we pick up some of the smaller roads that the town can't get their equipment on, the Town of Lansing helps us as part of a, a shared services, they come in with their machine, they gotta grapple, right, that picks it up, puts it in the truck, so nobody's, just, there's a few limbs that they can't get with a grapple.
They never get them.
If there was a pile of grass on top of that brush, it would get picked up, too.
Yeah.
But if you got like, bags of grass clippings, it's probably not gonna.
No, I meant like those tall, like.
Well, like, like your ornamental grasses.
Ornamental.
They'll, bye-bye, they'll go.
Okay, well, I already threw them out for this year, but I'll remember that for next year.
Oh, definitely.
Okay, anything else, Carol? Drew? Nothing from mine, I just wanted to make, it's sounding like the minister may have made a decision, should I attend the April Town of Lansing meeting, or has Wolfgang got that one, I just wanted to, if you need or want me to do it, I can.
I plan to go there, but.
Okay, that's, that's fine, then, yeah.
You want to go?
No. Well, if you, if you change your mind, I could be. I'm just making it up, thank you, Wolfgang. Wolfgang?
Well, Joint Youth Commission is still looking for members on their board.
Nothing.
As usual.
Okay.
Nothing from me.
I'll just write Nada.
Mike, Mike, Mike Stone, Mike Thunder.
I didn't say anything, well.
He does it to everybody.
Well, you did, you covered it.
And we'll see them on Monday, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't have much time, so.
This is just like a family meal. Yeah. Okay, well, I've got some things I, I need to talk about, we've kind of already talked about some of them, the trails grant, we took care of that, so that's, I appreciate that, I'll get that grant application completed before the end of the week, and then I can send you the, the first draft, once they accept that. I was going to remind you about the joint meeting, we've already talked about that. Deborah and I attended a meeting last night over at the Raynick Golf Club, this was almost an impromptu meeting, at least as far as government officials being informed. People are very upset about local assessments being seemingly unfair, inequitable, and that the process is not very transparent from the county, this is the county at the tax assessment office. We had private citizens, we had contractors, developers, we had real estate agents, there were, I think, four legislators, there were myself and Peter Salton from the Village of Cuyahoga Heights Board. So, a lot of people don't understand, not just how the assessments are arrived at, they don't understand the process, so I think the county's gonna try to find a way of improving that information, getting it out. They don't believe that the assessment office has enough staff in it to do an annual assessment of all of the properties within the county, which might be true. They, a couple of people didn't, thought that the, the assessment staff was lying, that they were making numbers up, and they were shot down pretty quick, everyone there knows Jay Franklin at the assessment office, he heads it, and he works hard, and he works his people hard, and I, I think the outcome of it is, they're going to, they're going to propose a subcommittee at the county legislative level that will look at the assessment process, see if it can be improved, definitely see that transparency is there, people can understand it, and then also potentially look into adding some staff to that office to help them do assessments. It was a good meeting, there were, there was a lot of good discussions, some good ideas, and I, my concern, and I didn't say this because I didn't think it'd be a welcoming crowd, you can solve some of the assessment problems for some of the people, but if you make it level, people who were receiving lower assessments that were happy, were not, are not going to be happy, they're wound up to be equal with everyone else, I think there's always gonna be someone who is not happy with results. We're never gonna be, it's never gonna be a completely amicable solution for the county, it's a big, big process, but I think the, the county legislature have, have agreed to work with some private citizens, a subcommittee of people within that realm, sort of, who would provide feedback about assessments, so, it was about a two-hour meeting, so we attended that, I'm just letting you know what's happening. So you can, down the road, there will be more information forthcoming, and I'll try to communicate that with definitely the trustee level in Jody, so that we know what's going on, if we want to provide input to that, so, be thinking of this in the back of your mind.
Well, and also, the whole thing is, when the, the problem is, your neighbors sell their houses, and they're getting big bucks right now.
Big bucks, yes.
So now, now that's the value that their houses have, and if you are at the same level as them, your assessment goes, I mean, our assessment went up $100,000, which is crazy, but, Bird just sold a house for that.
Yes.
So, and our house is bigger, so, and it's really what it comes down to, everyone's assessment should be at that level, we can lower our tax rate, the county can lower their.
That's the thing.
Lower their taxes.
That's exactly right.
On your assessment.
Right, double everyone's appraisal, you know, then kind of.
Yeah, cut your taxes down.
Put that on your assessment, and they go notice of increase, it should affect your taxes by this much, it is on ours in Cortland County.
Yeah, that notice is misleading, kind of, in that they.
Well, it's decimated, you know what I mean, but nobody should see a windfall from increase in assessments, it's not a time for municipalities to gain a bunch more budget expend, money.
If the tax stays the same, it goes up with you.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's why you have to lower your tax rate.
So, my, my last point was going to be, you led right into it, led right into my trap. When we do our budget, let's don't automatically say we're not going to raise taxes because we've got more money coming in from assessments, let's also look at, can we lower our taxes? Do we need the money? I think we do it pretty, like, what I've seen, we do have done a really good job of planning our budget, making sure our money looks good, the thing that also helps us is that.
I'm sorry, can you stop that?
Yes, I will stop the meeting, we need to. The, we need to pay attention to the assessments, we have always.
Hi, Jody.
We have all, hi, Jody, we have got, we have a really good process, I think we do a, an above-average job of, of putting money back first before we go for a project, and I think our citizens know that. I have had no complaints locally about assessments and taxes from us, we are a very small sliver of this, but there are some municipalities and some organizations, some school districts, that are really hammering people with high taxes, and saying that it's washing their hands of the assessment. I can just say the tax rate is the same, but you're going up in inflation for three years in a row. Right.
I don't think it's the municipality so much as the school district.
The school districts are, are. Not the largest percentage. They are, they are a big percentage, but there are some municipalities that are starting to make complaints, too.
Jody did say something about, I think when we were planning the budget, about, we're using this year's assessment.
Yeah.
To calculate in our budget, where next year.
Yes.
She's projected that it was gonna go up.
10%, I think.
Six digits, or, it's in the six digits, like, this year it was like.
The appraisal you got in the mail.
Eighty, ninety thousand, or something like that.
Falling tax.
Yeah, so, next year, but we've always been really good in our needs, like, our needs, our budget expenditures, and we see if the, she's really good, I mean, she's the best there is.
We all are.
Yeah, and.
Jody, Jody is the focal point, we.
Absolutely.
It's our job, and I think we've done our job well.
Absolutely, yeah, it's a great team.
It, it is a great team, I, I just want, I just want us to be aware that there is an undercurrent, almost an overcurrent, of resentment against the assessments in municipalities who don't raise their rates, but get a lot more money, let's just keep that in mind next year when we start.
It's also a lesson learned for Tompkins County that people need things to be gradual, I mean, it's not like the real estate market just boomed yesterday, it didn't, it's been booming for three years.
I mean, the rate should be set based on, it really just decides distributional effects, like, if everyone, you know, if company rates got cut in half, you should double the tax rate, by first, just to keep. And that's the type of discussions they're gonna have in the subcommittee. Just like, if this house is worth more than that house, that house pays a little shit.
But there's private contractors out there that do appraisals, like, do, like, we had them in our township, we, instead of leaving it all up, we did a reappraisal, we hired a private contractor, instead of somebody like this gentleman, Joe Jay, I mean, they could take 10% of what he's appraising, and have a contractor come in and analyze it, and see if he's fair, I mean, that would be an audit.
Right.
I mean, that, that, to me, I, I pay a lot of taxes, I mean, I have a lot of land, I mean, but you know, audit that, check the systems and checks and balances.
But your taxes really are based upon the combination with the tax rate. Like if the appraisal's doubled and our, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't really matter unless the tax rates didn't come down in half. So.
I, I, and, and I, I can't say whether or not that he's not already audited because there are, there are guidelines from the state that he has to follow, that he can't throw out or supersede. So I'd let you know that there's a discussion that will be ongoing and I'll let you know what's happening with the subcommittee and know if, and so if any of you are interested in this, that you can kind of
Did they videotape it?
No, they did not. Not, let's not know. But for the subcommittee, once it's a formal subcommittee, they will, yes. And so, and everyone, and it will have a, a public comment period in it. So people can come in and talk and so it'll be a regular committee meeting and they do record this. So at that
But being a former retired broker, it's always, always been an issue around assessment.
Yeah, yeah.
And taxation.
Yeah.
I mean, it's great when you can sell a property and, but that harms and harms and some and others profit.
That's true.
One of the responsibilities of a homeownership.
Yes. I would say from my personal experience, it's much fairer here. There's no perfect way, I think, but it's much fairer here than Cook County, Illinois, which is a, you know, a total lotage. Yeah, very unfair, lots of lawyers and all. It's never, that was not good.
Anyway.
Okay. Jay gave a presentation at T-Cog. If, if you're interested, I'll send you a link to that and give you the time. And it's, it's just a nice little presentation on how he does his assessment. It's not into the specific, you know, the bottom level details.
This is an up
Can you say that to me too? Yeah, I wanna forget it also, right?
Cause I, I wanna know where this is coming from if somebody starts. Unfortunately, I don't have to have those discussions anymore.
Cause I'm not Selling a home and you look at the appraisals they do for comparables?
Looking at Zillow, I mean, there's huge abundance
You're an ex-realtor, right?
But that's when we had the, we were walking around with listings, waiting to come off the fax machine at three o'clock at Dick Wilson Real Estate where the dental office is.
Right.
Like, whoa, you know, we had keys to the kingdom, you know, it was
Look at it now, yeah.
If we wanted assessment information, we would go to the assessment office, go to
Look at it now, you guys.
In the, in the index.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can search
Realtor.com.
All kinds of stuff now.
Okay.
Anyway.
But that, just, this is the start of the discussion. I just wanna make you aware of that. Uh, I will send out that video and I'll give you a pointer to the, the time his presentation goes. It's, it's a nice little presentation. The last thing, uh, there is a reimagining, reimagining the mall workshop that starts tomorrow night. Deborah and I are attending that. Uh, it's two hours tomorrow night, eight hours on Saturday.
Shop Sidestack Mall?
Who's hosting that?
Kaiga Med is sponsoring it. Uh, the host, the facilitator is a company called the Sexton Foundation. And I, in reading their website, they're more interested in clean water and clean energy. So I don't know exactly where this is gonna go.
Interesting.
I, uh, so we're going, Deborah and I are gonna both be in the, in the meeting. I will come back, might, maybe, I hope I have, can compile a summary of what we gathered from it and presented at Monday night's meeting with the, with the planning board too. Because I think whatever happens is gonna be important for the planning board too. So I just let you know.
The proposed attendees are the other, other
It's open, it was open to the public. I, I heard about it last minute. Yamila Fournier on the Senate app and asked, asked several people if they were, if they'd heard about it. I hadn't. I, I studied a little bit and, and talked with her about Deborah. She hadn't heard about it either. But we wanna go see what's going on. My concern, I, I have concerns that it's just going to be for public nonprofit use of the mall and nothing else. And part of the, part of the sale or the, uh, the, uh, results of the Kaiga Health Building so much over there was they were going to draw in more retail business. And I'm concerned that they're trying, they might be trying to convert the mall into specifically a nonprofit location. And that's it. Services, some services are good, some services may not be. I, I'm cynical about things like this for lots of reasons, but hopefully I will be proved wrong. But I will bring back whatever we learn from a high level from that meeting and share it with you. If not Monday night at, at a forthcoming meeting and perhaps through email too. So I just wanna let you know that that's going on. But that's all I have for today. So are we ready to go into executive session now? Okay, so 1:15 and I'm turning off
Take a motion first?
Uh, I, yes, let's do that. Yeah, so let's record the motion. I will make a motion that we go into executive session. I need a second. Susan Angely seconds. All those in favor say aye. Okay, it was unanimous. So I am shutting off the recording at 1:16. Okay. Uh, we, uh, the village trustees voted to come out of executive session. I moved that. Susan Angely seconded it and we came out of executive session at 1:48 PM. There were no further, there were no decisions to be made after that meeting other than we need to adjourn. So I need someone to move the adjournment.
Can we move that we adjourn?
Carolyn and Wolfgang. I'll say a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, okay. We are ending today's meeting at 1:49 PM. Thanks everyone.
Oh my God.
Up there yesterday?
Uh, no, I haven't seen them.